All right, it is six o'clock. We will bring the City of West Melbourne council meeting to order. If you will all stand and say the pledge with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, thank you. Welcome to the West Melbourne Regular Council Meeting tonight. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any topic, whether it is on tonight's agenda or on any issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker's card, which are located by the door, and submit it ahead of time to the clerk, who's sitting right down there. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments to the city council rather than to individual members. Direct all questions to the chair. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. Councilman Frampton will be joining us via Zoom. All right. All right, thank you. We will start with presentations and proclamations. Chief Festa, I believe this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have the members of the Citizen Police Academy come on up and join me? So, pleased tonight to present part of our group of the 15 members of the community that graduated from the six-week Citizen Police Academy. Those of you that have not been through it, I know several of you have, but they touch on all aspects of the policing, from patrol, traffic, investigations, special investigations, K-9, Strategic Response Team, evidence processing, you know, you name it. And of course, I think some of the favorite parts is they get to do a little bit of hands-on with some high-risk traffic stops and some processing for fingerprints. And, you know, for us, it's just a way to, for them to learn a little bit about what their tax dollars go to, but also for us, we get to learn what the community expects of us. So Lieutenant Rao, again, coordinated this year's session. She could not be here, she's at training for this week, so... But just want to give a shout out to her and also to the rest of the Police Department employees that led the thing. It's a chance for them to really show their craft and just get to better know our community. So several of them are here tonight, and we appreciate that they're here. And they were also super flexible during the fall because, of course, Helene affected us a little bit, so we canceled one night, and then Milton, of course, so they got a couple extra weeks out of us and appreciate them sticking through the altered schedule. So joining us tonight are some of those members, Charles Majak, Glenn Vinkey, Suzie Kajerski, Paul Lopez, Nicole Van Buskirk, and Linda Smurra. So I just want to thank them for being a part and glad to have them here tonight. Does anybody have any comments? Okay. Can we take a photo over here? Oh, and Linda, I didn't mention your name, Linda Smurra too.
Yes, she did.
I did?
I'm just special.
And they already did receive their graduation certificates at the graduations, so appreciate that.
All right, thank you, that's wonderful. I'm sure they all had a great time. I know I've been through that class several times, it changes from year to year. I loved it, absolutely loved it, so hope you all enjoyed yourselves.
I have a question, when's the next one? Because I would love to go through it.
We'll be planning for one again next fall.
Okay.
We'll probably start-
Oh, not till next fall?
Yeah, we do one a year.
Oh, okay.
We'll probably start advertising in May or June for it.
All right, thank you. All right, and you have the next item too?
I do, so if I could invite three of our newer police employees up to join me? So pleased to be joined by three of our recent hires. Our public service aide, Scott Chrissy, Shelley Goldstein, and Anthony Romano Jr. So pleased to have them with us. I'll start with PSA Chrissy. He joined us in September. He has associates from Eastern Florida and a bachelor's degree from FSU, and he's fluent in two additional languages, so kind of an interesting background. Prior to coming to us, he worked in customer service and technical work with some electronics. So as you know, the PSAs come on with us and they handle the non-in-progress complaints, but certainly an integral role in the Police Department and also allowing the Seward officers to focus on some of the other in-progress crimes. So he's doing a great job and we're happy to have him, and he hit the ground running right away. So next to me is Shelley Goldstein. So Shelley joined us in September. She completed the Police Academy in 2022, and she was working for BCSO West Precinct prior to coming here. So she has a bachelor's in criminal psychology and a minor in music from FIT. So with her previous experience with the Sheriff's Office, it was nice. She was able to come in, go through the field training program, but she was able to go through the fast-track program because she was familiar with, you know, many of the things we already do. So she is currently on night shift and just doing a great job, so happy to have her as a part of our agency. And then finally, Officer Anthony Romano Jr. We actually sponsored him through the academy this summer. He graduated in September and then began his field training and evaluation program. He has a bachelor's degree in film and TV production. And before joining us, he worked as a security corporal for Palm Beach Atlantic University. He is doing a great job in training, and he's in his final phase of training with a field training officer, and all's going great, and come January, he'll get his check off and then he'll be a solo patrol officer. So just pleased to have all them with the agency. I'll open the mic to them for any comments.
Hi, so again, my name is Scott Chrissy. So I grew up my whole life essentially in Brevard. I played football and basketball at Rhodes Park for West Melbourne, so it's been nice to be able to come work at the city just that I have such fond memories of from being a child. So again, thank you.
What other languages do you speak?
It's Russian and German is what's my bachelor's degrees in.
Very cool, thank you.
Awesome.
Hello, I'm Shelley, also born and raised in Brevard County. I've been here my whole life. My dad actually worked for West Melbourne PD, left in 2014, so it's good to be home again.
What brought you here from the Sheriff's Office?
I felt like I kind of got lost in the sea of green. I wanted a smaller agency to where I could feel like I got more of a community outreach kind of side. I'm big on the community policing, and I felt like we were so busy out in West Precinct especially. I didn't get a chance to do that. I've definitely already gotten a chance to do that here, so it's been a really wonderful switch so far.
Good, thank you.
I'm Anthony Romano. I moved down here from New Jersey in 2019 to go to school for film and TV. My dad worked for a business that he owned doing directing work, and I worked under him as a video editor. So film and TV was an easy degree path for me. I wanted just to get a four-year degree and then transition into law enforcement. So I've always wanted to serve, and I'm glad to be here.
Well, welcome.
Welcome, welcome, thank you for coming.
Welcome, all of you.
All right, next up is Candace Blake.
A little shorter than him. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce our grants administrator. This is a new role with the city, and we are very excited to have Ms. Jacqueline Jackson on our team. She comes with over a decade of experience in grant and contract management, including in local government, so we're just very excited to have her.
Welcome.
Good evening, I'm Jacqueline Jackson. As she said, prior to coming to the City of West Melbourne, I worked down south for the City of West Palm Beach. Prior to that, I was with Palm Beach County for about eight years, as she said, managing grants and contracts. I actually grew up here in Brevard as well, so I'm excited to be back. Seems like a quiet, fun place to raise a family, safer than South Florida. So we're excited to be here. We've been here for about five weeks, and I'm excited for the work that the city is doing here, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mark Picorillo, you are next.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm happy to introduce to you two newest members of our team on public works side. This is Taylor Hamilton, and he's been hired as a maintenance worker on the parks side. And this is Jonathan Templar, who's been hired on the streets and drainage side, on the public works side. And I'm very happy that these two individuals fill our 100% capacity on public works, which we were down probably over a year on the public works side on streets and drainage employees. So we're very happy to have them aboard. Taylor's been with us about two months now and working out well with the Parks Department. Obviously, they told him he had to come in a suit and tie. And Jonathan's been with us about two weeks now, so we're both happy. They're both filling in, and with that, I'll let them say hello.
Hello. Okay, all right, yeah. So I wasn't born here, but I moved here when I was around five years old, over in Melbourne with my family. So I grew up around the area, got to see West Melbourne grow as a community, and it's a privilege to be able to work here now for everyone. And I'm looking forward to spending my time here, thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, so my name is Jonathan Templar, born and raised in the area, so I'm a native, I guess. I'm just happy to work for the city. It's been great so far and ready for the rest of the year.
Welcome.
Welcome.
We're happy to have you, welcome.
Thanks, guys, welcome.
All right, next items, there are no modifications to the agenda. There are no public hearings. Do we have any cards for speakers? I don't believe so. All right, we can move right on over here to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion in a second? No one has asked to remove anything, so can we get a motion in a second?
Mayor, can I?
Oh, sorry, yes, sir? Yes, Stephen?
I'd like to pull 7B.
All right, 7B. All right, can we get a motion in a second to approve the rest of it? And then we'll go back and discuss 7B?
Yeah, I'd make a motion when we approve. Item A, approve the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, no?
Tuesday, November 19th, 2024.
All right, and second, Diana. All right, we have a motion by Pat, we have a second by Diana. All those in favor?
I have a change. Well, I have a question that I had asked Tim about-
Okay. We have a motion and a second, do you want to pull something?
No, I don't want to pull, I just have a question on something, on the minutes. It says that Mayor, you were here, you served as mayor two years, Pat.
No.
It was only one year, but it says here two years, so that needs to be changed.
Good catch.
I only got paid for one of them.
Well, darn it.
Good catch, all right. Do we want to revise that, that we vote to approve it regarding what the change? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Thank you, motion carries. All right, 7B, Mr. Frampton.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question on the mobile water reading system. We took a 15.4% loss on this. It was pretty substantial, $351,000. So can I get some background on what happened and why we took a loss?
Absolutely, so the loss on this is really just kind of in the books. This was an obsolete system that was prior to what our current reading system is for our meter reading. And when it was put into the financial management system for the fixed assets, the depreciation was not calculated correctly. So this would be technically a fully depreciated item, and we wouldn't have taken a loss on it, but the calculation was put in incorrectly. This was back, you know, probably two decades or more ago that this was put into our system, so it's just an obsolete item, and this just cleans it off of the books since it no longer exists.
Is the correction going to be made on the paperwork? Or because it's showing a loss to me?
So because it's in our system, we do have to show it this way. So it does show as a loss, but it is just, we didn't, I guess I don't have a good way to-
It's a, so in order to clean the books, we need to get it off the books, and so it's going to show in the annual audit. The loss of $351,000 will show up as a loss of assets in our hundreds of millions of dollars of assets, so.
But you were saying it was fully depreciated, but we're showing a number greater than being fully depreciated?
And I apologize, I should have worded that as it should have been fully depreciated years ago, but because of that calculation in the system being incorrect, it is now, we have to depreciate, and so we do show the loss because it's been on our books as an asset, even though it doesn't exist anymore.
Do you have a date on when we purchased that system?
Not on hand, but I can definitely get that to you and have Mr. Odison that over.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Did you want to make a motion to approve this? Do you want to, shall we bring this up at the next item, Mr. Frampton?
Might be simpler, somebody just there does it, but I can make a motion to approve, sure.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to approve item 7B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Pat, Mr. Bentley. Thank you. All those in favors of approving 7B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, the consent agenda is approved. All right, thank you. On to the next item, the non-consent. Rebuild the Peabody Head Lane and Bowler Pump for the reused distribution system at the Ray Bowler Water Reclamation Facility, Mr. Picorillo.
Yes, good evening again. Yeah, this is just a maintenance item down at the plant for a redistribution system that we have. The pump is, original date is 1991. It finally failed last year, so we pulled it offline. We did have a spare that's being used now. So by rebuilding this one, it'll give us back a spare for the reuse system. So when we budgeted for it last year, the price we had was $45,250, and being that it's been a year, the price went up to $47,750 to have it rebuilt.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the council? Can we get a motion? Yes?
Just want to confirm, because it does say on here the quote expires on 11/23/2024. That's not going to cause an issue when we go back on this, right?
No.
Okay.
All right, can we get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Helen, a second?
I'll second.
All right, second Alexis, thank you. All right. I don't see any hint. No, I don't see any hints up, I don't- Now I can see it, thank you. Ms. Adams, did you have a question? Now I can see it, thank you very much. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries, seven zero, thank you. Next item, a recommendation to receive the annual report of reappointments.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, as you know, I became the clerk here in January of this year, and I have only received three individuals who reached out concerning any appointments to any of these boards. One gentleman said that he would be interested in serving, sent him the application, never heard back from him, tried to contact him numerous times, never heard back. Another gentleman also asked for an application, sent it to him, never heard back, reached out again, never heard back. And the third one was an individual who contacted us, wanted to serve on code enforcement. We contacted her and said, "Thank you for the application, we need some sort of resume, just one sheet that gives a little bit of information of who you are, your background." And we never heard back from her, and I contacted her several times. So the appointments that you see before you tonight, we're not making any recommendations to council. This is completely your discretion. But just so you know, we currently are not holding any applications, and so the few boards that I'll go through that have vacancies, we'll be doing a solicitation in the newsletter, and we'll also be doing it online. So with that being said, the first one that you have before you is the Board of Adjustment. Just very quickly, there are seven members. This board meets when there is a case. They had two meetings last fiscal year. It's a quasi-judicial board, and there is one vacancy to the board. So if the council would like, they could go ahead and make a motion to receive that annual report and make the reappointments that you see on your agenda package, which would be, I'm going to butcher everyone's names, so I'm sorry, Teresa Beralt. Thank you. Thank you. Adam Gaffney and William Johnson.
All right, thank you. Is there any conversation? Can I get a motion in a second to approve these three, to extend their? Ms. Adams?
I will make a motion to receive the annual report from the Board of Adjustment as well as make the reappointments that are listed in our packet with the three.
Thank you, Ms. Bolts?
I will second that, but I have a question.
All right, what is your question, please?
Three members here, but you said it's seven members. Are these the only three members that are up?
Yes.
Okay.
There are a couple of boards you'll see here where we reappoint the entire board every year. This is not one of those boards, this board has staggered memberships.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Adams. We have a second by Ms. Bolts. All those in favor of extending the terms of these three applicants signify by saying yes. Aye? Those opposed, nay? Thank you, motion carries. All right, congratulations to these three, thank you for the service. All right, next is the Business Advisory Board.
As I just said, this is one of those boards that every single year you reappoint the members of the board if you so choose to. This board has 11 members, so this is the board with the largest membership. We have five vacancies currently, with Councilmember McGuire having to step down as well. And as you can see here, we have, oh, I'm sorry, they also meet every other month. So we have Matthew Brothers, John Frazier, Rand Masterson, Rusty Mel, Cody Neber, Robert Rialis are those current members.
All right, thank you very much. Any conversation? Can I get a motion in a second from Ms. Adams?
I had a quick question. I know that we've had, you know, kind of a revitalization of the West Melbourne Business Association that's been meeting monthly. And I know there are a couple of us that have attended previously, but do we know if there's any sort of relationship between those two? I know one is an advisory board, the other one is not, but they're both working on trying to engage businesses in West Melbourne. So are we trying to communicate with both of those groups to kind of encourage participation in the other if it's applicable?
Yeah, I think each group during their meetings talks about engaging and trying to be, you know, I wouldn't say a partnership, but work together. The West Melbourne Business Association is a private entity, and it doesn't have anything to do with the city other than bearing our name and having the best interest of West Melbourne businesses, and also being part civic in that they raise money for our elf's run activity with the Police Department and give that contribution in the West Melbourne Business, I'm sorry, the Business Advisory Committee is meant to be the liaison group between the business community and this council. And often, the topic du jour is, you know, relative business trends out in the community and inner- and inter, interacting with staff and the electeds to try to stay on top of those and bring any concerns forward from the business community. Because many of the businesses in West Melbourne, the ownership of those businesses don't live in West Melbourne. And so they're not, you know, they're not voters, if you will. And so this committee was formed many years ago as to, to bridge that gap and give the businesses an opportunity to engage in the, probably the largest project that they took on, that we took on last year was a, a business survey relating to how the, the city services are doing relative to the business community. And so we did that. And then twice a year, we join and have a joint meeting with the West Melbourne Business Association. And that'll be coming up here, one of them will be coming up here in either January or February. We do the, present the state of the city.
So in terms of these vacancies that we have on this board, because there's quite a few of them, when we have new businesses that are looking to come into the city, they're working on their paperwork, all of that process that happens, if they're eligible, are we, you know, when they talk to staff or anybody, are we personally inviting them? I'm just trying to think of a way to engage with the new businesses that are coming in that may have a vested interest in this advisory board.
Yeah, that was actually kind of the gist of one of the questions in the survey. And, you know, I think there's always interest in participating, but never partic, not as much participation as we'd like to see.
Maybe we need to send them a welcome to West Melbourne letter from the council, personally inviting them to join the board. I'm trying to think outside the box to fill some of these vacancies because five is a lot. Those are my only comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Ms. Volts. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question. You said there's five vacancies, but there's six names here, so...
Eleven.
Eleven-member board.
So why do we have six then?
There are six current members. And if the council would like to reappoint them, they can. And then we have five vacancies that we don't have any current applications for, so...
Okay, so that's what the five puts in, okay.
To Councilmember Adams' point, that we would try to solicit people to join that board.
Okay, now I get it, okay.
All right, thank you. I'm still looking for a motion in a second.
Did you make a motion?
I did not, I was asking questions.
Oh, okay, well, I'll make a motion that we approve this list of names.
I'll second that.
Oh, second from Austin. All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor of, of extending the terms here signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Seven zero, thank you. Our next item, Code Enforcement Board.
The Code Enforcement Board is a seven, seven-member board. There are currently, again, thank you, Councilmember McGuire for resigning from her position as an alternate. There are currently two alternate positions that would be available and we will solicit for those positions. And if the council would like, we have currently three reappointments to make, which would be George Bosch, Chris Gibbs, and Linda Pallardi.
All right, thank you. Motion in a second to reappoint these, these people? Ms. Adams?
I'll make a motion. Maybe I won't with my microphone on? I'll make a motion to receive the report and make the below reappointments.
All right, thank you. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
And second, Mr. Bentley. Ms. Volts, your light is on? All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor of extending these applicants, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. All right, thank you. Motion carries. Next item, seven zero. Next item, Planning and Zoning.
The Planning and Zoning Board is made up of seven members that are appointed by the council and one individual who's a non-voting member of the board that is appointed by the school board. There are currently no vacancies to this board. And there are three individuals seeking reappointment, which would be Paul Burnkov, Chris Jordon, and Anna Capnula.
Very good. You did great, I was way with that. All right, can we get a motion in a second to extend these terms? I don't see any lights on.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Ms. McGuire beat you to it. She got her light on faster. Ms. McGuire?
I'll make a motion to accept that report and to accept the reappointments for, what is this? The Planning and Zoning Board.
All right, thank you. Can I get a second?
And I will second.
Ms. Volts? All right, thank you very much. McGuire and Volts, motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by nay. Thank you. Motion carries, seven zero. All right, last is Parks and Rec.
The Parks and Recreation Board, they reappoint in odd-numbered years. So there are no reappointments at this time, but we would like you to go ahead and accept the report if you so desire. And that's why they're alphabetically not in order, because they're standing out alone and it bothered me not to put them in alphabetical order.
All right, thank you. Can I get a mo, a motion in a second to accept the report? Mr. Gaylord?
Make a motion to accept the report.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Ms. McGuire got her light on before you, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of accepting the report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, thank you. Motion carries. All right, next item, seven zero. So next item, Joint MOU Understanding Between Brevard County and City of West Melbourne, Space Coast Town Center Regarding Trip Vesting.
Thank you, Mayor. We are joined this evening by the development team for Space Coast Town Center. And big kudos to, to them and to Planning Director Fisher, City Attorney Carey, and a name from the past, Morris Richardson from the county, who have all worked hard to, to update this and put this together. Again, this is a kind of a refreshing of an old document that dates back to 2013 when, which kind of predates the Space Coast Town Center as a, as a entity, when it was five individual parcels and predates the, the Parkway, Heritage Parkway that was constructed. This was put together while, while that was all happening as a way to monit, monitor the trip vesting from the new development, which would essentially trigger improvements to the Parkway. And so we've, the team has, has worked hard to put this updated agreement together as an MOU in order for us to kind of memorialize this into the future. Now that we, obviously, the Space Coast Town Center is the entity. The county is in control of the Parkway and the property is now in West Melbourne, which it wasn't at the time of this original agreement. So all these factors have kind, kind of transpired since that time. And so now is the time to come forward and update this agreement and, and put everything together. And we have all the parties represented. If there's any specific questions or any questions relative to the, the trip vesting triggers or, or mechanisms that have been put in place with this.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion in a second and then we can discuss this item? Looking for a light?
Oh, I see Mr. Frampton has his hand up, Mayor, in case you're...
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Frampton, I didn't see your hand up. Yes. Please, be acknowledged.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Joint Memorandum of Understanding with Brevard County, City of West Melbourne, and Space Coast Town Center Regarding Trip Vesting.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Frampton and a second by Mr. Bentley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Seven zero. Thank you. Next item, council, council meeting schedule for 2025. Yeah, we all have this in our packet?
Yep.
All right, can we get a motion in a second to accept the council meeting schedule for 2025?
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor, before the council approves this, again, this is just our traditional dates. We tend to do one meeting in July. Logistically, with the Fourth of July, that always tends to fall very near the first meeting. And with the summer, we tend to do one. And then we, on years where the first Tuesday of January falls close to the holiday, we've traditionally done one meeting in January as well. And so that's reflective of this current schedule. We always put this out to approve it so that we can set dates for public hearings and public notices. Because we have some new members, I just want to mention a few things. One, we also put this date out because sometimes we're not in tune to other thing, other major events happening in Brevard County. And so we try our best to, to check and double-check our dates. But with, I was going to say without an election next year, but it sounds like there might be an election. We'll have to be cognizant of that date, when, when and if a special election is required in our area. And I'm referencing, you know, some of the talk of all the state positions changing and, and shifting. And so that, there's talk in March or April of a special election for those seats if those things happen. So we'll have to be aware of that. And then also just want to add that from time to time, during some of the council meeting breaks that are longer than a couple of weeks, if there's ever a need for us to, to call a meeting, if there's a, a contract that has a, a date that we need to, to be in front of or if there's a legal matter that, that is time-sensitive, we do, from time to time, call a special meeting, in which case we reach out, make sure, you know, we have a time and a date that works for everyone and then schedule a special meeting. And so we haven't done too many of those, I think two or three, since the time that I've been here. So it's not very frequent, but it is always an option to have a, a special meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm going to assume you consider national night out and the tax implications for ad libarium and all that kind of stuff. So that being said, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-27, setting the calendar for 2025.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
I'll second, but I also have questions.
All right, thank you. Your question?
National night out was first on that list, so Mr. Roddy?
Yes, we, we have always tended to keep that meeting scheduled. And then as we get closer, make a determination. If everyone recalls, last year, we, we did hold a short council meeting before our national night out event. If, if there warrants it, we might have to reserve that right again. If, if there isn't anything pressing, then we might be able to cancel that meeting. Just depends on how the schedule for that evening unfolds.
Understood. Just wanted to check. And in regards to elections that may happen next year, since we don't really know, also thinking about the future of this building, since we're going to be building the new building department, building not at this location, are we expecting any change with the supervisor of elections that could impact these dates, not just related to the special elections that may have to occur?
Yeah, I think these dates are going to be good. We have reached out to Tim Bobanek, the county supervisor of elections, to let him know that in the future, you know, the council chambers will be moving and to start getting on the radar as far as what the, what their plan is, whether they want to continue to utilize the council chambers in its new form or whether they want to, you know, find another location for, to, to be the, our main polling location. And so I think that's on Tim's radar now. And, and, you know, the good news is we have plenty of time. But probably focusing more on the, on, in two years for the governor's election will be the, the key date that will, they'll have to make a decision by.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. No one else has any other comments we'd like to make here? All right, we have a motion, Mr. Bentley. We have a second, Ms. Adams. All those in favor of accepting the date signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Wait, those are our dates. Thank you very much. All right, move on down to council report. Helen Volts?
Yes, I attended the Code Enforcement Board meeting and that was the longest one that I've been to. There were quite a few issues on there. But one of the, one of the, I guess, the amounts that they were going to charge this person was almost $100,000. And, but they did kind of cut it back to like 2,500 eventually. The next one was like almost 10,000. They did the same thing for that one. But it was those two, people just did not know what was going on. And, and it was a shame that they let it get that far, but they did. And just the thought of having a fine of 99-plus thousand dollars was like a shock. But I was just very glad that the board had worked it all out with them and also the staff that was there, they worked it out. So, so that was good and I was very happy to see that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
No report.
Mr. Gaylord?
As Councilmember Volts said, the Code Enforcement Board was actually very good. Watching the members of the board deliberate on, on the fines and, and, you know, what decisions they were going to make was very informative. But she did leave off that we did go to the WMBA meeting last month and we got some chicken together, so that was fun. And then just one comment, since we've now approved the schedule for 2025 for City Council, the second meeting in April is my birthday, so bring your party hats.
All right. All right, Ms. McGuire?
No report.
All right, Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. The CivMel organization does not have a meeting in December, but we did have one earlier in November. They are looking for ways to engage with different cities in Brevard. And I'm not 100% clear if that means volunteer opportunities or different service ways to connect people in our cities with those that are, are closer towards the base at the northern end of the county. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because I'm hoping at our next meeting in January, I'll have more information on that. But they're just looking to continue building that. They did share that Brevard County, they've seen an increase in the number of people, not only that are coming here because they're being assigned here, but the number of people who are expressly putting the Space Coast region on their like request forms as their top three areas to come. So I just thought that was interesting data, especially since many of us attended the EDC where they talked about branding and really trying to push out the importance of the Space Coast. From our CivMel perspective and that military piece, it seems like that's, you know, that's not the only piece reaching them, but apparently our service members really want to come here. So that was, that was really interesting information that I just wanted to share with you, as well as to recognize our city staff and our PD that really went above and beyond for our recent Farm Share event. We got the cars in and out. That was probably some of the most full boxes that I think I've seen from a Farm Share event recently. Kudos to all of the gentlemen and ladies that were lifting them, because you could only do so many of those boxes in a row. But they were full, they were stacked to the top. They had food items, hygiene items, even socks and things like that. So I just thought, you know, kudos to staff on a job well done. They always tell us our city does the best job as far as running it, making everything run smoothly. So I appreciate that. And then just quick reminders to council, we do have the tree lighting for Friday. And then the Ping Pong Palooza and the Flutie 5K as a fundraiser in support of Promise in Brevard on Saturday, if you'd like to attend. I will not be running, but I will walk quickly.
Well, well, I will also mention on those food share, they took some of the stuff out of the box. They emptied it, but there was so much stuff, they couldn't get it back into the box. So how on earth they ever got it in there to begin with, it was some creative person that did it. But, but it was my first time doing it. I forgot about that, so it was a lot of fun doing that.
Thank you. All right, thank you. My only comment is I went to the, I don't know what you'd call the event that we had at the Park Sunday. It was a venue, there were hundreds and hundreds of people.
The oddity event?
It was oddity. It was definitely oddity.
It was definitely...
It was an oddity. It was a celebration.
Oh, they were celebrating. There were, it was, cars, cars were parked, all of Fell Road was parked all the way down from Minton, all the way down to the park. And so I went to Flanagan, and I had to park down at the park, the main, the big park, and walk all the way back. Cars were parked nose-to-nose on both sides of the street. They were everywhere, and there were lots and lots and lots of people there. And being so, our grass is really taking a beating. I don't know, I mean, it's grass, I'm sure it'll come back, but I was certainly glad to see all the people there, and I'm sure that all the vendors were very happy that all the people were there as well. There was a lot of food being sold. There were a ton of dogs there. We have signs up that say service dogs, but no other dogs, but there were a ton of dogs there. And of course, I love dogs, I just, if we have a sign that dogs are not allowed, we should decide, they either are, or they aren't. But anyway, it was, it was an oddity. It was an oddity event, it certainly was, a lot of strange things there. All right, let's move on to management reports.
I apologize. Did Councilman Gaylord, did you give your report?
Did I give you, Mr. Gaylord?
Okay, I'm sorry. I, my apologies, I...
You forget about bringing your party hat already?
I did. I apologize. So, only item I wanted to ask the council and just have a quick discussion is, we've talked about doing a retreat for council priorities, and kind of a strategic goal here with the new council. And we've talked about possibly doing that in January, and I didn't know if there were any dates that didn't work for anybody in January, that we could kind of eliminate, and then send out an email and start locking down a date sometime in January to have that event.
Are we looking at a weekend or weekday, depending on people's flexibility?
I think we're looking at a Saturday.
Preferably a Saturday.
I think we're looking at a Saturday event, you know, probably something 8:30-ish to 4 o'clock-ish, you know, give or take on start time. And they, so I didn't know if there's any dates that didn't work for January for the council.
I will be here at your service, whatever day...
Not, yeah, not my ser, for the greater good of the city, yes, for the greater good of the city. We will have a facilitator again, as you guys did. The last time you guys did this was in 2020. So we'll kind of, oh, sorry, go ahead, sir.
For me, it would be best later in the month, but 28th or so, but I could possibly do it sooner than that, but the best day is the 28th.
Okay. So with that, we'll have Tammy send out an email and confirm dates for everyone, and then we'll get the, we'll get the facilitator locked in and get it posted. And very similar to last time, the facilitator will set up one-on-one meetings with each councilperson before the retreat, and just kind of go through the process and talk about, you know, ask for ideas or suggestions, so that we can have a little bit put together when the group comes together. Still be time to discuss everything, just try to streamline it a little bit, so that we're not spending a lot of time just writing things on the board, that we should, we'll have a list to start with, so.
And I apologize, it was the 25th, not the 28th, sorry.
January 25th, okay.
All right. Management, anything else with management reports, Mr. Carey?
No, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, chief, no, nothing? Okay, all right. I'm at the end of my list. The most thing left is adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn? Motion, Ms. Adams, to adjourn, yes?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. Second, everybody get up and leave. Okay, we are done at 6:49.